In the absence of our, of Bill and Steve, I'm going to assume the reins and call a meeting of the Finance Committee to order.
It's Wednesday, February 26th, Justice for the Record 20.
It is Wednesday, February 26th, 2020. And we are here with members of the School Committee and Dr. Baye and Nat Wells.
So for the purposes of, excuse my voice for the record, we wanted to, and we asked to continue to have discussions with FinCom to try to continue to explain our budget a little bit more. So what I did tonight in two different handouts, one you already have and a second one we'll come around after, is I wanted to look at enrollment as of December 1st, excuse me, October 1st, comparable districts, chapter 70, state funding, charter school enrollment, pay scales, where you could find all of those districts contracts, because I'm not about to copy all of those for you, sorry. And then we'll finish with special education out of district tuition. So those are the three big things. The enrollment, the chapter 70, the contracts, and then finish with special education tuition. And then you know that on the 16th you'll get a line item budget, but we can schedule another date to go through that as well. The School Committee will finalize that budget next week, so we'll have another week before we have to come in front of you on the 16th. And we have it up here as well. So on the first handout that you have, I tried to organize it as clean as I could. 2429 is our October 1st, 2019 enrollment for the 2019-2020 school year or fiscal 20 year. So this is where your funding comes from on January 21st of every year of House One and the governor's budget. It's based on this. You'll see the breakdown by school as reported. This does not include 138 students in school choice. It also does not include, I believe it's 43 students from REEDs. It does include all of our students that are out of district, and it includes all of our students that are over 18, up to 22, that are still being provided services by us either in district or out of district.
Can you say that again?
Sure. So the 2429 includes all of the residents of the town who are either here physically or out of district through the age of 22, until 22. 138 students not included in the 2429 are school choice students that come from roughly eight different communities, with Attleboro and Taunton being the two biggest. Okay?
And you said 43 from?
And 43 from REEDs Collaborative.
REEDs Collaborative?
Yeah, so that's the definitely hearing program. That's part of, well, we actually have three Norton resident students that are part of that program that used to go somewhere. They're actually now here, along with 40 other of their peers.
And they come from? So that the Yell?
That is predominantly right now at the Yell, the middle school, the high school, and the JCS. And I'll be tomorrow night at the joint meeting, I'm actually doing a map of each school K to 8, pre-K to 8, with what's a classroom, and how many students are in classrooms, and try to, and tell you where REEDs is, and how much money we get from REEDs, and all that stuff, so we can move on from some of these discussions. You'll also see in the next chart kindergarten enrollment at 165 students, with 14 and a half, 24 students with disabilities, and growing, because this is that age group where we see that flux of students that need further testing. They may have been with us for preschool, they may not have. Those students would have already been on an educational plan, but these are students that potentially come into the system. And the last one that you'll see is our pre-K enrollment, which is currently according to October 1 at 109. Currently it's at 113. Okay? You gotta be a good Catholic, didn't you? That's what my mother said when I said, "We've gone, I gotta go." You can join me over here, I won't bite.
Excuse me, Dr. Baye. Mr. Atkins Chairman, do we need notes or minutes from this meeting?
If you do not, you have your own.
We do, okay.
What's that? They think they can be compiled from the video.
I think so, I'll just take notes as well.
And we'll take some general notes too, and share them with if you want.
I'll give them to you.
On the next sheet, you have, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, these first two sheets are literally upraised from them as per what we reported, is the profile. So these are the districts that you are compared to as a public school system in 10 different areas. So you have Ashborough, Westminster, Belcher Town, Beltingham, Codger, East Bridgewater, East Long Meadow, Foxborough, North Meadowsex, then Norton, Sandwich, and Triton, with Foxborough and East Bridgewater and Beltingham really the only three that are really close by. Yes, sir.
So Norton says 2438, but the other number was 2429?
Correct. So this is based off, if you take a look, this is the last, this is based on the prior year's data. So they're not always aligned, because they use things like MCAT scores and all of that stuff. So like if you go to the Transparency Center, which is something I tell everybody to always go to on our district site, which by the way, costs us $5,500 a year, that's two years out audited money. Everything. That's every, that's everything that the taxpayer paid for, the grants, the revolving accounts, gift accounts, school choice, everything and anything is in there. And it compiles all of the money that you spend in education. That's why you see 36, 37 million, even though you typically owe, you know, 28, 29 million. And what this does is, it tries to bring together the target areas for communities like you. So the community that's the closest to us is Foxborough. Right? It's a community that spends $5 million per student more than we do every year. No fees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They have the money coming in from business. I mean, that's a, that's a clear thing. Our outcomes are also very comparable. And you can look at that within one to two percentage points in almost every assessment and growth model, which we're really proud of, but sometimes I guess makes it more difficult to say why we should be spending a little bit more. You can, on the district, on the testy webpage, which is www.doe.mass.edu, you can literally go to Norton, and then all the way over to the right, and it says Dart Tool, D-A-R-T. You click on that, and this is the screen you get. And then from there, you can look at comparable districts. You can compare it to any school system in the Commonwealth that you so choose. And then you can take a look at, on the selected category, it's got special ed, ELL, minority, how much you're spending on teachers' contract. I mean, it's got everything you can think of there. It's a really interesting piece of information for folks to have. The next sheet.
Dr. Baye, yes. How were these, a list of other towns chosen?
So they'll look, they look at finances, they look at curriculum, they look at student population, trying to think of some of the other, human resources, assessment, leadership and governance, all of those issues. And they say, "You guys kind of look a lot like in some way." But then the 315 communities, 271 school districts. And so every year, one or two of these, every couple of years, one or two of these changes. The first year this came out, Foxborough wasn't on our list. They joined our list three years ago. But there was other communities that were on there that I liked. I'm trying to think of one of them was?
Millis used to be on there.
Millis, and the other one was Stonem. Stonem was on this list at one time.
Yes.
So, yeah, I just noticed that, because it was one of the ones that I was like. And then you have regionals, Westminster, North Meadowsex.
Triton.
Triton, regional school system comprised of multiple communities. Okay? If you go to the next page, what you'll see is from the Department of Elementary Education, this is the beginning of how your chapter 70 fiscal year 21 numbers are calculated. So this is exactly what we get when the governor releases the budget. We usually get it about two to three days later. I want you to pay attention to a couple of things if you don't mind. On the left-hand side, the first nine issues, topics, administration, instructional leadership, classroom, all the way through operation and maintenance, excuse me, and 10, include employee benefits and fixed charges. This is how they break down how much money you get per student for each of those categories. Depending on, on the top now, where you get for the age group, preschool, half-day, full-day. Now let's talk about half-day, full-day. At one point, your half-day, full-day, three years ago, going on four now, this would have had, at best, 50% of that money of the 1.3 million that's noted there for full-day kindergarten, because you were getting only 50% of that because you were counting on tuition, even though the tuition really wasn't 50%. Okay? So one of the things that comes into play here with the formula is, if you're a town, which is a needy a town, I hate to say it that way, but that's the facts, this is where you get the benefit of going to full-day kindergarten. For us, what it did is it created a bigger line item within the budget, but we don't necessarily see the benefit back to the town. And I'll explain that a little further on another line item. That's our first year of doing it. Vocational. You had a zero on that line item for years. We now have 41 students at Norton High School considered vocational technical students. Our business technology chapter 74 program that we started a year and a half ago, here's your benefit. Your benefit is, in the formula, that's the equivalent of $613,000. Eventually, this line item is going to help us, especially when our enrollment stabilizes, because the formula is grounded on specialization, special ed, ELL, poverty, things like vocational education, things like full-day kindergarten and preschool, and maintaining enrollment. And that's always been that buffer for us right, right now, because we've gone through years of declining enrollment, either nine kids or 109 kids depending on the year. And I'll go through some of that this year too. That was a zero last year. So now you look at your special ed tuition out, your special ed in, your English language learners by grade level, this is increments above the base. Then you look all the way over, and you'll actually see that they're accounting for 2,400 students, not 2429. Okay? And then you look all the way down, and what you'll see is that our foundation budget per student is $11,113. Now, what's important to go back for one more, one more thing, is, one of the things we attacked a few years ago was item 13, low income. If you remember, some of you, and most of you had children in the system already, or had them at that point, we started to mail home the free reduced lunch packets 2013-14 school year. It was the first year we did it. That's why we saw, that's the first year that we saw an uptick. We had 33 students added to that list that year. We were only hovering around 50499. We're at 579 right now. This is calculated in a whole different way as well. Now, the Student Opportunity Act, one of the big things out of that act is ELL and poverty. Right? Huge on the poverty. My last district is getting $1,200 per student, while we're getting $30 per student. 40% free reduced lunch, 40% minority, that's where the formula is benefiting it. Because they're basically saying those communities need further support with populations of students. We don't have those types of numbers. It's that simple. You'll see that Mansfield, Walpole, Foxborough, Eastern, North Attleboro, we all got $30 per student. That's all we got. Same idea. We just don't have those subgroups at a level that mathematically gives us some type of overarching support. It's that simple. There are 183 school districts in the same vote this year. That's up 23 from last year. There are 183 school district superintendents and school committees that are irate. I'm going to DC at the end of this month, because they're looking at cutting Title I and special ed funding. And so we have a bunch of us that are going down there to simply say, which we think will get support, even from the, no disrespect to the Republican Party, even the Republicans who are accepting the president's budget are saying, "We can't, we can't do that. That's devastating to communities." So we're hoping we can come back with some positive usable support. If you flip to the next page, what you see is a determination of chapter 70 for fiscal 21 of required contribution. So this gets a little hairy, but on the left-hand side, you have your effort goal. And that takes a look at items that are really important to the formula. And let me ask you to pay attention to item number two, uniform property percentage, .3741%. And how all this adds up within the formula is just like an algebraic equation. It's that simple. A plus B plus C plus D equals E, so on and so forth. E that is taken and put into another category, and then it comes down to the foundation. It's foundation, local contribution equals unit school spending. A plus B equals C. It's that simple. Now, within A, there's 30 lines. Within B, there's 30 more. But the fact of the matter, that's how simple it is. So when you look at these numbers, and you take a look at how they calculate income percentage, low effort from income, these are all numbers that are pre-populated for the town of Norton, not necessarily based upon your students, but based upon your community. So when you hear me say things like, "Your ability to pay as a community," by the way, it's the same as Norwell, Massachusetts. Your ability to pay is equal to Norwell. It's incredible. And we all know that those are very different communities. That's not a knock on Norton, by the way. That's just, those are two very different communities. If you take a look at per capita income, for example, it's a $24,000 difference. Now for this area, our per capita is reaching $90,000 this year. It's up there. There's your ability to pay.
Is this, is one, two, and three saying that we have valuation of 2.5 billion, and they're saying that's you, we're going to give you 37% of that?
Exactly.
To give you 9 million.
Basically, that's the, the way the formula works. This is what we see your valuation as a community is. This is the percentage that we're taking from that that becomes the grounding local effort from property wealth that goes into the formula.
And is there, is there a chart for that percentage based on that valuation they give you? Is there some type of?
Because of DOR, Department of Revenue. I don't know it.
But they, they must have some.
Oh, they, they, they're true. Again, that's going to be yet another formula that compounds an issue.
Yes.
So when you look at all of that, and then you look at increment towards the goal on the right-hand side, what you see here is, what are we trying to get to as a base number for local contribution within the formula? And what's really important here is that when you start to look at percentages, if you remember, our colleague from the FinCom, Paul, when he was on it, used to talk about all the time, he used to be the lead person on it, say, "Remember when we used to get X number of dollars from the state? And they said we have to come down?" Because what happened was, your percentage of wealth as a community was doing health, and the state kept doing this to you. They kept just saying, "Hey, let's keep on going, Norton." And then they finally said, "Hey, guys, we can't keep this up. So guess what? Since your percentage of wealth is going up, we're going to have to come down with what comes from the state. The rest of it is on you as a community." So what we're, what we look at is these line items, just like they're here, number 26, FY21 required local contribution is 15 plus 23 plus 24. Just follow the lines, and it gets you to the $19.8 million, which is, as a contribution, Now, if you flip to the next page, this is where it gets really interesting. Because your contribution locally and as a state is based on every student who attends a public school within the Commonwealth, excluding the charter public school. So this is going to include my county, your Bristol County, excuse me, it's going to include Southeastern, and then us. It's not going to include the charter school. They're in a whole different system. Okay? Which has been one of our problems with how all this is done. So if you take a look at foundation enrollment for FY20, what you'll see for the apportionment of local contribution across the three districts is 2,433 students, which is 93.53% of the total students that go to the three schools. All I did, just to get you to a number so you can see some comparisons, is when you look at 29 million, 25 million 977851, and you divide that by 2,433, you get a per pupil expenditure of 10,677. If you do that for Southeastern, 17,465. And if you do it for Bristol County, agricultural, by the way, both outstanding institutions, 17,159. So there's your big difference between, we're talking about $7,000 more. And as you, and many of you know, I came from vocational education. I don't fight voc, I fight the formula of voc, but I don't fight.
Can you go over that again? I'm on.
Yeah. So if you look at the, yeah, you're on the same page. If you look at the 2,433 students, first line, and then you look at the second line, 25 million 977, all I did is that I divided those numbers. And that equals 10,677 for Norton.
But what is that number though?
That's not on there. Oh, that's a calculation I made. Sorry.
10,000?
677. Southeastern, 17,465. And Bristol County, 17,159.
Yep.
Okay. And again, this does not include your public charter school. So when you start to take a look at these fundings and how they require us to spend so much money, or X number of dollars, flip to the next page, and when you start to see is, how did we get to where we are? And our chapter 70 allocation is under minimum aid number six, $30 per pupil, $72,000. Okay? That's what you're getting from the Commonwealth this year. Nothing more, nothing less. I will be talking about how that 72,000 has to be spent, by the way. There's a curve ball in the legislation this year, that the $72,000 under the Student Opportunity Act has to be fulfilled under a formula requirement. It's not just Joe gets to say whatever he wants, and the School Committee votes on it. It's much more specific. We have some issues with that. So if you add the 72,000 to the 12,827,390, you get your 12,899,390, which is the number you've probably already seen at some point. But what's important is on the right side, comparisons to FY20 for FY21, is your enrollment 2,433 down to 2,400, a net change of 33 students or 1.36%? We knew that was coming, as you know from some of my prior presentations. But what's really important is, when you look at the local contributions and the percentage change, those numbers for years have been negatives as a percentage. And I'm going to tell you why. Because we have 41 students in vocational program. So although overall it doesn't help the 72,000, within the formula, it keeps us from losing even more money to the state. And that's a good thing for us. So we've done two things in the last seven years. One, make sure we try to get as many parents to fill out the free reduced lunch, because there's a benefit to us, and overall, and to the family. As you know, this year alone, we've spent over $2,000 in gifts to support families because of major situations, thanks to, thanks to private citizens in the town. And then two, the vocational. We're hoping that we can double that number in the future, and see the benefits of those types of programs long-term. When you look at the target share number, once again, the chapter 70 percentage of foundation came down. That's the number that Paul would talk about all the time. The goal of that number is 40%. That's the goal. Right? The goal is a 60-40 split in some way, shape, or form. Now, that's always going to change from day to day because of declining enrollment or increased enrollment, any of that. Charter schools, I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, because I think it's important for us to have some further detailed discussion about what that means to us. Our required net school spending is 117%. So we are 17% above what we're required to spend. The average in the area is 124. So we're even 7% below that. We have communities around us at 140, 136. There's no community, there's no community comparable to us except for East Bridgewater. That's not that number.
Can you say what that number means again, the 117?
So when you look at, when you look at the, the, what you have to spend by law, this is 17% above that. The average is 24% above that. Okay? For this region. And you have to look at region, because we, with all due respect to my colleagues in Belcher Town, cost of living in Belcher Town is very different from Norton, which is very different from, you know, the Cape, which is very different from Worcester and Boston. It's just, you, you gotta be careful of the comparisons. The other thing is, if you remember a few years ago, we did some comparisons, and one of the things that we tried to tell everybody is, what do we spend on employee healthcare that becomes part of your total cost? And what we noticed is, in this region, in the Tri Valley League, which is one of the things we do, is I look at neighbors, I look at the comparable to that tool, and I look at the league. Those are the three areas that I use. Taunton and Attleboro are always different. I always use them, but I always put the little star next to them that says, you know, they're cities. They're a whole, it's a whole different way of doing everything. But we, we were spending $650, plus or minus, more per student expenditure on employee healthcare, just because our, our system was paying more. So if you remember a few years ago, $900,000 was given back and was put on the employees, and that's kind of leveled us off in a better way. Not necessarily good in the eyes of the employees, but that's what happened that particular year. I think that was three years, four years ago now.
So one other question. So in this chart, on the last column says percentage change. Chapter 78A says .56%.
Right, so it increased by .56%.
So the state says, cost of living, everything, .56%.
Even though the cost of living this year was reported as 2.1.
Right. They're below. They give you that much more. Okay.
Okay? If this had grown, if we had had 100 more students enroll in Norton before October 1st in the fall, this would be a whole different number. We'd probably be getting in the vicinity of 650,000 to 750,000. Because it's based on that enrollment thing. You gotta offset, if you're, if you're a community that's targeted to go like this in terms of, in terms of the support money, you've got to just bring in bodies to offset it. It's the only way to do it. So for us, and I know that some members may not like it, but for us, that's been the revolving account of school choice. That's how we've survived with one-to-one, new curriculum, and all of that stuff. Without it, we wouldn't. Okay? Next sheet. This just shows you 2015 to 21, this is the total amount of money each year that you receive from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. What a waffle. Okay. Next sheet. Enrollment history. So this is, through 2020, this is how we've gone from 181 students at the charter school to 91 students at the charter school.
Wow.
Okay? Cut it by 50%. And that's, that's, that's a lot of variables. There's not just one. But we do think that some of the things we've done, when we talk to parents that come back, it's a lot about, you're doing one-to-one, you got good class sizes, you know, our upper elementary kids, upper secondary kids, when they come back, it's all about the athletics, the activities, all of that stuff. So we're proud of that. We, again, there are many variables. I will never say that it's, it's everything to do with Norton Public Schools, but we feel comfortable saying that. So we've seen some, we had an increase of 21,000, presented the actual number of change prior year, 128. That was actually a good year for us, because the FinCom supported the recommendation to give us most of that money. Not all of it, but we got some of it as part of the money that was given back to us. But as you can see, although they declined by five students, they still got more money as part of the formula. So this is, this is the game that we dislike very much. It's not about parental choice. I mean, as you know, I'm a child, I'm a parent of a child of choice. Right? Whole different ballgame. But this is another choice program that's called public school, that's using a formula that we don't think is fair. Yes, sir.
Have their numbers gone down at the charter school?
No, their numbers have actually gone up.
Gone up? Their numbers have gone down?
Correct. We are now, we're not, we went from number two in enrollment to now we're number six in enrollment. And they just opened up 400 seats, and we saw no increase in enrollment from Norton. And we're proud of that. And I think it is interesting, it's not, I think it's, I think it's a lot of work by a lot of people to, to communicate the story of Norton Public Schools. Come in and see it for yourselves. I can't tell you how many kids in the time I've been here, under my administration, where we've just said, "Come spend a day. Come spend a day. If you don't like it, it's okay. We get it." It's like going, it's like choosing a college. Go visit, spend a day. Did you like it? Was it interesting? Did you like the schedule? Was the cafeteria food good? How was PE class? How was that AP class? Or, a lot of the kids actually transitioned during middle school. That's where we see the uptick, is in the middle grades. And we're, it's a, it's a good story to tell, especially in this day and age of competition.
You said they tend to come back more in middle school?
Yeah. Next page, the split to contrast.
We're also, just to, we're also not losing them in kindergarten.
That was my next question, was, when did we start pre-day?
So these numbers directly coincide with that.
Well, they're around 2015.
And if you were, Paul, we got a lot of flack because we took money out of our budget to pay for it.
Yeah.
And we said at the time, we said, listen, we gotta do this because not just for us, but for the town, it's gonna be the right thing. The charter numbers, the charter tuition numbers that you're looking at would be considerably higher if we hadn't done that. And we did it, we did it knowing that we weren't gonna see the money back, but that it had to be done just to, to, you know, kind of right the ship, not only for, for our students, but also physically for the town. So I think, I don't remember what, what year it was exactly, but instantly we saw the numbers.
It was chapter seventeen that we did it.
We saw that year, the kindergarten numbers went down. And, and people told us, they said, three fold AK. If I can get it over there and go there and then I just stayed.
And, and here's the other part, and this is just something new to me that I didn't know, I haven't even been born in school, given any of this. One of the things that was really, really interesting about what Dennis just said, when we got into the school choice business, our numbers were low, first year we were in eleven, we have a hundred and thirty-eight this year. Guess what our biggest intake is for full day, for, for enrollment and choice? Full day kindergarten is the first one to say. You know where those kids used to go? Cause I've asked. The charter school.
They're lined up at the door on April first.
Yeah. So what that tells you is, which costs them nothing anyways, they still have to transport them here like they do the charter school. They just are like, you know what? This is kind of interesting. We're, we're gonna go to a, a, a public school. It's the next town over. Let's try it. And I say to them all the time, why are you applying here? Oh my, blah, blah, blah. I kinda like it here. My, my grand, my parents still live in town. You know, we get a lot of that. That's kudos to you folks. And don't forget, every community around us is going to school choice. As projected when I recommended it to the school committee. We were the first ones to go. And so will we see a little bit of a leveling up? We could. Hundred thirty-eight students for a district this size in school choice is pretty good.
I think a lot of those students will be sticky though, right? I think, I think once, my kids I know, if I ever told them, hey, we're, you know, we're switching towns, they would lose their minds. So they, they let us stay where their friends are, so.
I will tell you, but we'll have new ones continue to come, once.
It's also the transitions.
Yeah. And Joe and I have this conversation sometimes, even though the towns are obviously are starting to do it as, as we said we would eventually, because you can't look at these numbers and say you're not gonna do it. But they are, they're different districts too, you know? I mean, I, this is no knock against neighborhood districts, but I don't think that we would necessarily look at ourselves as a competitor for the type of person that is gonna go to Taunton or Alabot. I think, I think we're, I think we would draw, we would draw from, from people much more than they would. And that's.
Not yet, but.
I'm not giving any offense to them, so, but, but I, I don't, I don't see those districts beating us out for school choice.
We're, we're in an age of parents who are now products of charter schools and private schools, and they're having kids and they want choice. Period. My generation didn't necessarily want choice, my parents' generation definitely didn't want choice, except for Catholic school, other Volk. This whole idea of charter schools and any of that, or even specialty academies that we're seeing throughout the state, I mean, you'd never see, especially the immigrant family kid, you just went to the public school. But now you, you have that. It's, it's an age of competition. And I think kudos to the school committee for at least listening and saying, you know what? Let's try this and see what it means, what's it mean to us, how much does it kinda cost us? Does it really cost us? Does it really? And, and it's not perfect. I can tell you, I can assure you that it's not perfect. The school committee knows it's not perfect. No kid is perfect, by the way. But anyways, the next few pages are contracts. Appendix A, the first one, is the pay scales for the administrative assistance unit unionized. You'll see them, they're locked in for FY twenty twenty-one. So they're under agreement. They also have a stipend situation for degrees, you see that on the second page. Salary schedule for custodians is the next one, has a two point two five, that was agreed to three years ago, so they're entering in third year. So not all of our unions are on the same break negotiations. The next one is Unit B administrators. There are two administrators in this unit. These are assistant principal positions. Work two hundred and two days. The next one is the current teacher schedule with all of the assistant physicians attached to it. Now, let me, this is not FY twenty-one. Why? Well, school committee is negotiating with teachers and the paraprofessionals. The teachers and the paraprofessionals are now one union. There were two before this. They've unionized together. So we are currently negotiating with those two groups, creating one new contract. And it's going quite well. We're moving, we're agreeing, we're in typical negotiations that takes place. And then the last, second to last sheet is the paraprofessionals. Again, I just noted to you that they're negotiating, so these pay scales are current pay scales on the last sheet.
Doctor?
Yeah?
What gets you from step one through nine or ten? What's, what's the steps?
So I hire you at master's step one. That's a great question. Let's do that with a teacher's scale, right? Cause that's the easiest one to do it. So I hired you at master's step one at forty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Right?
All right.
Okay. You have your master's degree, you gotta teach history for me at the high school. The next year, you're automatically getting fifty-one one seventy-six.
Okay.
Plus a COLA added to that.
Yep.
The following year, fifty-four oh eight, with already two COLAs in place, you're in the second COLA now. Right? Now, you finished fifteen credits. Guess what? You're gonna move over, plus the COLA, and so on.
Plus the step.
Plus the steps.
So you slide down and slide over.
So you can slide over, you can, you always slide down and then you're capped.
So steps, some amount of years of service.
Years of service, yeah. Now, let's say you have been working in Taunton for the last five years and you have a master's degree. Under state statute, you have the right to come in at master's step six, because you've already provided five years of services. Now, where do we get into the curveball? High-end chemistry, physics, world language, special education are a nightmare. Nightmare. Math, they're nightmares to, to, to fill. So we end up competing. A few years ago, I had a kid right out of college, right out of college, who got hired by another community at step five. Never spent a day, but they'd been searching for months for a science teacher, middle school level. And I just said, I, I just, that's not fair, that's not equitable. But we do find ourselves in those circumstances all the time, where we have to, we have to pull the lever on it. Okay? So when you say to me, Joe, why are we budgeting at sixty-five thousand dollars? We're gonna hire a grade three teacher at sixty-five thousand? Potentially we could. What we're seeing right now is a huge decline in teacher candidates, including elementary for the first time. They're just, they're not, they're not graduating, they get in, they're not staying. I mean, we had a couple of positions, and Jen can speak to this, we had a couple of positions of people who left us in October, not this year, but prior years when people left us in October from an elementary position. No thanks, I'm outta here. This isn't me. This isn't, and it happens. Happens everywhere, by the way.
Doctor, excuse me.
Yeah?
That list of teacher disciplines that you mentioned, that was a long list. What, what's left that's easy to hire for?
English is easier, social studies, histories is easier, elementary is a little easier, music. Physical education is actually becoming more difficult, because, you know, we're typically looking for the two certifications. So I, I know Jen speaks at Stonehill, I've, I've speak, I've spoken at Stonehill and at Bridgewater. I've gone to BCC as well, I'm trying to think, Worcester State, Fitchburg, UMass, both. I've done speeches and I've said to an audience of two hundred and fifty kids, how many of you are going to elementary yet? Two hundred and forty-nine of them stand up. And then I said, how many of you are math? And the one kid says up, and I said, here's my business card. Call me in three years when you're done, because I'm, I'm not gonna necessarily need the numbers. Bridgewater State University last year graduated three, three students, Bridgewater, yes, three students in mathematics, three.
Wow.
Chemistry, physics are all coming as second career people. There are people that worked in labs, engineers, and they've said, you know what? I've always wanted to do this, you know, to quality of life, not necessarily money in most cases there. But we've also had to hire someone, you know, somebody retired at eighty-seven thousand from us, and we hired somebody at eighty-six four, because they were the only reasonable candidate. And you look at some of the resumes, and one of the things I've been, thanks to Jen's work, what we've been trying to do is really tell our principals to dive into those resumes, cause you see this two and out, two and out, three and out, one and out, one and out, one and out, and I'm like, okay, ten different jobs in ten years? This is not, I, I don't wanna spend any money on this. You know, I need to, I need to move on, including in the high-end areas. So I now, I'm, I'm so old that I now see resumes of people that I let go when I was a high school principal. So.
You hire somebody, how long do they stay?
Um.
Thinking or is it?
No, it does work. We've, no, we've continuously helped people. Continuously. I, I'm thinking of physics. We actually lost a teacher in science two years ago, who left us just because of family, closer to home and all of that. And a year, two years later, we had an opening, and she called me directly and said, I want to come back. I miss it, I wanna come back. And we just, we, first of all, we were devastated when we lost her, because we, she was young, she wasn't allowed on the pay scales, so she wasn't a, an M twenty or something, she was literally.
And she was phenomenal.
And she was.
And she was a phenomenal teacher. We have, if you look at our staff list, we have a huge amount of staff that have professional status, they've been with us for more than three years, who have, you know, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, we have a few staff members that are in the forty-year range, who have been with the system for a really long time, they've dedicated their career to Norton, to our students.
Once you get to, once you get to year ten and twelve of being in the system. You typically don't see them leave unless they're leaving for directorship and leadership positions, principal, assistant principal positions. The problem is right now, is if you're paying, in our industry, a one hundred and eighty-two day hard work, no doubt about it, I highly respect a teacher position, ninety thousand, and you're gonna pay an elementary principal a hundred thousand for twelve months, they're gonna say, thanks, but no thanks. Unless they're really like, you know what, long-term, this is what I wanna do. But if you got ten years left, it's not worth it. It's not worth it. And so what happens is, in every community, it's different, but you, you end up with these situations where, and, and any, you know, people ask all the time about administrators and how much they make and so on and so forth. This is the reason why people don't wanna go into administration. I mean, we have, we've had nearby districts with superintendents with twenty applicants, top ten districts, they can't find applicants. And, you know, and some of them are, they're, they're just calling and they're doing their recruiting thing. That's, and they do it for teachers now. And the last page, I asked, I have to put this together, this is all of our district contracts. So these are all the different contracts that we have with busing, with chart wells, with school dude, our consultant groups, our mandatory, school committee association, superintendent association, the CLIB gov is on there, any and all of those. The VHS is the online learning for students that are taking online classes. Any of you who have kids in the system, you go into school grades, check their grades, that's twenty-eight thousand dollars a pop, twenty-eight thousand dollars a year for that. And that's chief.
Right?
So that, we wanted to put this together for you so that you saw all the line items of, you know, what these things are, are costing us. Okay?
Are these some benefits?
No, those are, these are all, these are coordinator positions, they're all teachers that have responsibilities above and beyond their teaching loads for each of the disciplines. And then these, same thing here with counselors, either extra days that they work by the contract, and then the coaches and advisors are on the other side.
Right, but are they added into their salary?
That's separate, that's separate from the salaries. It's above and beyond.
No social security, Medicare, all that matching.
Exactly. Yeah. They get pension, on their side, pension, off of that. Yeah. That's why they have it in the contract. If it's not in the contract, it's not pensioned. The only person that doesn't have that benefit are administrators. We are straight salary only. We can, we don't get vacation, we don't get sick time benefit, we get benefits of it, but we don't get it added to our base salary for the purposes of retirement. It's straight salary only for us. It used to be all, you know, it used to be houses and cars and all that stuff, from the state friendly ways though. Okay. Next stand-up, I hope, I hope you already have it. This was put together by Jean Sullivan. Jean was gonna be here, but Jean has got the head-on flu, stomach bug, everything, she's been out since midday yesterday. And I asked her to do this, this is all about out-of-district tuition. Okay? And I wanted to spend some time with you folks on this, because this is a huge bread and butter for the town of Norton's school budget. And I really wanted to, to take a bunch of people and say, learn more about it, please, ask questions about it, ask us to get you more information about it if you wish. So out-of-district tuition, as presented by Jean through my office, and I took out all names and all of that, but we're trying to give you as much information that wasn't sensitive. So you'll see that as of January first, twenty-two hundred ninety-three students, you'll see five hundred forty-seven enrolled in special education. You'll see the populations of students on IEPs within our Little Lancers preschool, and it just breaks it down for you over and over again. We try to give you as much of that information as we could. And then we have six students that are above and beyond age eighteen, students that are with us until twenty-two and age out. Okay? The next slide shows you the special education out of district of forty-five students, that's one point nine one percent of the total student population, or, or, and, eight point one one percent of the total special education. So it's under ten percent, which is actually good. We wanna be under seven percent. That's our goal. You know, get to that seven percent number. That's always been a goal that my, my mentor years ago said, try to get under seven percent as, as a total of your population if you can, by creating internal programs and so on and so forth. So that's our goal. And eight point one one, in twenty thirteen, when I got here, we had sixty-one students out of district. So we've, we've done some work, as you know, and I'll be talking a lot more about that tomorrow. The next one, I apologize, is really difficult to see, and maybe we can, Matt, maybe we can PDFs and send it to them so that they can see it on screen better than this. But what we tried to show you is, for FY twenty-one, what grade was the student in, left side, in terms of what range they were in, middle school, high school, secondary, what type of collaborative or private they were in. So you see the word private or collaborative. Private would be a private school setting, collaborative would be for us predominantly BIKO and REEDs, but it could be a different public collaborative as well. What the price is for FY twenty-one that's been established, we just recently received this information. So you'll see a number two, ninth grade student, private, neurological disability, plus sensory and hard of hearing, is costing us over two hundred thousand dollars. Okay? That's how this works. We wanted to show you the specifics. Matt, can you take a look and see if it comes out better on the screen? If you don't mind.
And that goes to age twenty-one, right?
So, but it could.
Possibly, possibly.
More than likely twenty-one, eleven months and thirty days.
Okay.
Right? We just actually had a student age out, we actually just celebrated him the other day. He's actually very well-known within the building, the high school and stuff.
He's at the high school.
And, um, it was, it was a great celebration. You wouldn't believe how many of our high school students popped in and said hello, which is a, is a pat on the back to you folks as families and for using your kids the way that you have. All right, so that's good. So as you can see on that list up there, hopefully, what you'll see is the whole idea of what grade level they're in and so on. I'll, I'll have Matt send this to you so that you can see a little bit.
It's still there.
I also wanted to show you the disability range that we're really struggling with. The emotional, right? So I want you to think about a student with ADHD, emotional behavioral, autistic. That, that's a complicated case, complicated situation. In many cases, those are students that we have situations with. And I'm going to get into some in a little bit because I want you to take a look, really take a look at it. The next slide is the students out of district by grade level. So you'll see that forty-three percent, forty-four percent of our students right now are at the secondary level, or at the high school level, I should say. But we have another twenty-seven percent currently and increasing every day. So I'm, I'm on the board of directors for the BICO collaborative. Today I got an email, we, we need to try to open up, the collaborative is trying to open up more space. You basically sent out an email to the districts that have the BICO admin and said, do you have any space for next year? Because what's happening is the eighteen districts that belong to BICO are about to not get serviced. We're about to be told, we don't have space for your children. Which means we're going to have to find another collaborative, which means further away, which means transportation not only costs problems, or it means private schools, which has, is significantly more expensive and not necessarily better.
I'm sorry, what is BICO?
So BICO is the By County Collaborative. That includes eighteen different public schools. Where we all, the board of directors, actually, the school committee appoints me. They have the right to be on the board, but most of the board, actually, all of the board of BICO is superintendents of the districts. We get together and if I have a, we, we basically tuition students to them to provide direct academic, social, emotional, psychological services as a school day, usually more than a hundred-and-eighty days. Usually it's into the summer as well, but sometimes to a hundred-and-eighty. And because all of us have these individual needs, by pooling it together, we're able to provide this service, right? Because you never want one teacher, one student in one classroom, that's not going to work. And two at a better cost. Okay? I don't know if that makes sense to you.
It's, it's a, well, I'm saying it's an economy of scales for a bunch of students, basically.
Follow-up question on that then.
Yeah.
Is it one facility or?
No, it's multiple, so, um, it's interesting. So when I was the chair of the committee, we, we renovated a building over by, you know where US Youth Hockey is? The rink on Route One, right down from the stadium, from Gillette Stadium? Is it that, oh, the building right before the hockey rink in the back?
Going north.
Exactly. Uh, that building was owned and it was there from up. So we spent six-hundred-thousand dollars of your money, not just you, of course, but the eighteen committees. Renovating the whole thing. And we now have a middle high school program there. And there are classrooms, there's two classrooms here. And then there's classrooms in Plainville, Redbone. And I want to say Wapole, if I remember correctly, those are the three. Plus the site in Wapole on the main track.
So some of them get services here, but they're pooled from other communities as well?
Yeah, we, we actually have, um, we have two students here and actually, one of the students is ours. We actually created a program. And then what we did is, um, we collect, um, through the revolving account for facilities. We still have to pay the tuition. Okay, because by law, you can't just say, well, because you're giving me facility costs, you can take off the tuition. We still have to show that cost, so we basically take from one and pay the other. That's what it comes down to.
Great, interesting.
The next one that you have is grade level and disability. So you have the, across the bottom, the type of disabilities, again, I'm sorry you can't read these. We're going to have to do a better job of showing you these. But what you'll see is, can we pull this up?
Yeah.
Let's do it over here.
Yeah.
What you see is, um.
The whiteboard's not touching me. Oh, it's all yours. If we had a teacher in here right now, this would be done.
Well, there, Danes, let me ask you. Back to the pie chart, students in and out of, uh, in out-of-district placement?
Yeah.
Forty-three percent of our total student body is in high school right now?
Of the.
That's out of district.
That's out of, of the kids that are, of the forty-five kids that are out. Almost half of them are at the high school level.
These are kids that, Norton residents who are going out?
Only Norton residents, we're only talking about Norton residents.
So is that a function of the fact that your predecessors sent more of them out and we've been trying to keep them in? Or just as they get older, we have less capacity to deal with them?
So we have, it's a combination of all that. So number one, we, we do have, in fact, a group of students at the high school right now that went out of district and continue to be out of district as early as K one. So one of the biggest problems about out-of-district is that a student could be out of district in preschool or kindergarten and be there until they're twenty-two.
Right.
Right? So what we did, what we have now is, we have twenty-one classrooms of specialized education in the district. We've increased that by eight since I've been here. And about to be nine next year because I'm starting another program at the middle school because I have students coming up from fifth grade. Now, you'll see, if you, if we flip through, placement out of district, you can't even read it. But if you go towards.
Just, just real. I, I would assume at the high school because, because some of them do go to twenty-two. The high school includes kids who are eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two.
If they're out of district, they're still, yes.
So that's another factor. Don't forget that the high school actually is an eight-year span. It's not just a four-year span.
For some, for some.
The pink color is the students that are, um, grade twelve-plus. So those are our students that are eighteen to twenty-two. That makes up about twenty-two percent of the forty-five student population. And I know it's, it's difficult to read. So, um, that, that purply-blueish color is strictly high school students that, students that would be considered in grades nine through twelve. Where that pinkish color is the students that are twelve, twelve-plus. Those are eighteen to twenty-two years.
So, so it's actually sixty-six percent, two-thirds are actually from ninth grade on.
And we do have programs at the high school that house students that are both nine through twelve and over and above, and, you know, two are separate classrooms. But, um, these are the students that aren't able to be in those programs.
So when you look at students that are out of district, you're looking at students that at some point the district, along with the family, concluded that in the best interest of the child, that their education needed to be at a specialized place. That's so specialized that we can't do it. For example, we just had a student move in this past year who is wheelchair-bound, one-to-one nurse. I mean, it's very specific, right? So that we just don't have the capacity for some, for some of that. We just don't. And not, not about money, it's the physical space, it's the ability to. And then on top of that, we have the whole idea of least restrictive environment. We want to provide every student with the best public education in the least restrictive environment that we can. And so that means that putting a student, you know, some people always say to me, well, you got a room over there at the Yale School, why don't you just put the second grader over there? Because you can't, because that student doesn't have peers. That's why. If it was that easy, we'd all would have been doing it a hundred years ago. But it's, it's not good for the child in terms of their needs. You can't have students together within anything larger than three years grade span. And what happens is, we have students right now in specialized classrooms where our teachers are responsible for multi-grades. So they may have a, um, fourth, fifth grader in the same, in the same program. Or six, seven, eight in the same program. So how do you get that student out? How do you get those students out into the, into the general education? Well, you get them out through the musics and the arts and the physical education and lunchtime and recesses. But now what we're doing is, we're getting them out for reading time. And we're getting them out for time. And we're getting them out for science time. And we're doing that because the studies are clear. Those students need to be with their peers. And it's incredible to see some of those kids at work.
Aaron, I think, and I think what you were probably heading towards is, look at this chart. It does look like, in theory, over the next four or maybe eight years, there'd be some mitigation of the expense as, as these people age out. The problem is, you just don't know. So we, we know what it, what it.
The programs are joining the ranks later.
Right. We know what it looks like. Like Joe just said, you know, somebody moves into the district and all of a sudden, bang, you're hit. So we just, we just don't know. But.
Can you go to the, can you go to the, the slide, it's called?
It seems to, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It seems to correlate with people to, you know, often, you know, we talked about people choosing middle school as a time where they're making a school transition and deciding to return from the charter school.
Yeah.
Right? They, in, in like terms around that beginning of middle school, beginning of high school, will be making their transitional decision. And, and so the number may not wane.
Yeah, and I, I would, I would venture to guess, you guys obviously speak way authoritative on this, but I would, I would venture to guess that a lot of these, they probably know fairly early on that there's going to be an intervention necessary. It's not, it's not something where.
So I would, I would have said ten years ago that you're a hundred percent right now. But right now, the things that we're seeing at the early age with emotional disability is really through the roof.
Yeah.
It's really, it's numbers and, and situations.
But that's, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm thinking that the out-of-district replacements, they know fairly early. It's not something that they decide later, we should, or is, is Aaron correct in saying that as they, as they go along, we're getting more, we're getting a larger percentage in the out-of-district at the later, later grades because they decide finally, we need help.
So our goal has, our goal has been by starting the programs to stop that from happening.
Right.
So that's the reason why the best program is coming to the middle school next year.
Right. But, but what we have now, what we have now, what we're looking at, do you think that's a function of, of, of this? Of the parents deciding at some point, you know, we.
Well, it's a joint, it's a joint decision. Instead of one-sided decision.
And I think too, there's obviously students that come in and you know right away that they're, have a physical disability or an intellectual disability, that's, that's very clear. There's also so many invisible disabilities that you really can't see in so many of our students. And I think, um, you know, what Joe was talking about is, you know, we've seen a huge, huge rise in our, some of our students' social, emotional issues. They're able to kind of maintain for a certain amount of time. As they get a little bit older, it becomes a little bit more difficult. And that's what we're really starting to see in middle school, high school. Students who have very significant SEL issues that, um, have become a challenge over time. So it's, you'd like to say it's a little bit predictable, but it's.
So, so.
I think this is a good segue into the slide you want to go into.
I have a quick question. You said that there's twenty-one specialized classrooms.
Yeah.
Throughout the district.
Yeah.
Now, how are those divvied out? How many at the elementary, how many at the middle?
I can get you that, I actually have a handout.
I still have a handout.
It's, on average, it's probably, in most of the buildings, it's either two. And in a couple of the buildings, it's four. I don't think there's a difficulty with five.
How many students total get, um, services from those specialized classrooms?
I don't have that number in front of me and I wouldn't want to just toss out a number.
I'm just curious.
Most of those classrooms are going to be between two and eight students. I want, so to, to speak a little bit to the question. If you go to this slide, it's the first slide that's called FY twenty, unanticipated out-of-district placements. This is this year's story. There's three slides in a row on top of them. So we had student X, intellectual autism, secondary level, who went from collaborative, private after July first. Then emotional autism, elementary level. And from the hay to a collaborative, then to private. July the only day, went from, to the collaborative, from over this, uh, from us. And by February this year, collaborative to the private. Next student, emotional autism, secondary, went from high school to private. Next student, autism, elementary, went from elementary to collaborative. Flip. Secondary, collaborative to residential. Collaborative to residential, that's a six-year hit. Collaborative pending. We have a student right now, literally at the printing of this on the thirteenth, that we're pending on what the placement will be. Secondary student, private move-in, unanticipated in July, not budgeted for. Secondary collaborative, forty-five-day placement. Now, what's a forty-five-day placement? That's a decision by us with the parents that moving this student to a review process. Psychological, academic, neuro if needed. And let's figure out what this student really needs. So they're going to be in a different place in forty-five days and then the team comes together and makes a discussion, decision on where to go. Next slide. Unanticipated twenty. Secondary, middle school to collaborative, uh, elementary to collaborative. Uh, elementary to collaborative. Then moved to another town, so I guess that's a benefit in one way. Next student, secondary collaborative, to a cost share because they were DCF. Let's talk about that for a moment. What do you think the process is for DCF? When they come knocking on our door with a student that needs services? They're yours. And then we have to battle it out about where the actual cost comes from. And they could become a cost share between DCF and the community of Norton, depending on where they're staying. But what happens if the student's best interest is that they're a Norton resident, they're under DCF custody and they're being shipped somewhere else? That bill could be mine as a cost share. Because they're a resident. Doesn't happen with our out-of-district because that's where we are, excuse me. Doesn't happen with a school choice because we bring the, if that were to happen, we'd bring the sending district to the table. They become the financial bearer of that.
How much input do you have on some of the diagnos, I'll call it diagnosis for lack of a better term. How much input do you have for, I see a lot of emotion. Obviously, some of these you couldn't tell right away.
Yeah.
With the emotion, you probably were the gambit of a lot of things. What's that process where you get?
Psychological testing, potentially neurological testing.
Internal, external?
Both.
Specialists and non-specialists?
Both, exactly, both. So you as a parent could say, I'm going to go to Mass Gen, uh, I'm going to go to, uh, Mass General to Children's and because of your insurance and you want to have your own person, you don't want us to do it. You want to do it with your own people, you're able to afford it or your, your insurance will cover it. And you come in with our report. Our specialist will read the report, conclude or not conclude the same thing. Many cases, they're already lined up. And then that's when, then you bring the team together, who's providing services to the student and along with the family, make a decision on the best interest of the child. That's how it works.
And is already these, is there any possibility of health insurance kicking in for any of these stuff? Some potential costs? No. Is it even a discussion?
Not even a discussion.
No.
So this has been our biggest pet peeve.
Really?
Our biggest pet peeve has been that in order to resolve the long-term financial implications of this for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that healthcare needs to be at the table. So I'll give you an example.
This isn't just an emotional issue, this is a physical thing too, right? For kids who require specialized expertise, you know.
That's all.
It is just an emotional, if my child, I mean, it took me coming into a psychiatrist program, that's how, my insurance will cover it.
If it, if it becomes part of the educational requirement, we owe the costs. Very.
So hypothetically, and I'm just going to share a personal example. I had my own child tested because she was having reading issues. My health insurance covered the neuropsychaval and the other pieces of it. All of the educational testing, we had to pay out of pocket. The health insurance would not cover any of the educational components.
I informed my units at the beginning of this year that our Medicaid reimbursement line that usually averages about two to two-hundred-and-thirty thousand in free cash would be cut by twenty to fifty percent, twenty-five to fifty percent this year. Because they want us to diagnose students' medical issue. We can't diagnose them. We are not M.D.s. You know, we, we just don't, don't have that. And that's why neuropsych, psychological, neuropsych is on average seventy-five hundred bucks, right off the bat. So either you have the insurance or you have the willing if you want to do it on your own, or it goes through our process. And we have to have it all done in forty-five days, I think, or thirty days, I can't remember now.
Testing has to be done within thirty-five, report to the families within forty.
So then, yes.
Did we sometime last year do a transfer from?
No, two years ago.
Two years ago?
Two years ago, we had eight students move in.
Yeah.
In the summertime. They were all after July one entrances. They all came from other towns and they cost us eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand dollars. And thanks to you folks, Boy Selectmen and the FIDCOM, through the school committee, we transferred two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand and change, if I remember correctly, to offset that cost. So this leads to another discussion. So this has been the reason why I've been a strong proponent, and I know many of you aren't, of a special education stabilization fund. Don't touch your regular stabilization, try to find a way. Let's put the Medicaid money all into that stabilization account every year. Just toss it in there. So when these surprises come up, you're not taking away from other departments or other budgets. It's something to talk about again in the future as a way to protect yourselves. You know, I know that stabilization is stabilization and thank you because I don't, I don't know what we would have done. And tomorrow morning, we could be talking about the same thing. But it is an opportunity for a town to say, when we have X, we put it over there. And I know it would, it would no longer be in free cash, but eventually free cash is kind of the way.
I think also, just the, to be crass about, the, the politics of the town are such that now, if, if we need to come and take out a stabilization, it, it becomes, it becomes one of these schools versus the town types of issues with, with a special, with a sped stabilization account. It becomes a lot more politically palatable to move money over to help us out when these situations arrive. If that makes sense.
And it takes the power within the school committee. It's a town meeting member vote.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just the reality of the town we live in right now and, and, you know, the environment. But when, when these things do happen, and they're going to happen, it's just, there's no control over it. It's just, I think it's a lot easier if you could just say, okay, we're not going to take from the general town stabilization that other departments may want to use as well.
When you establish your budget at the town meeting and it's done, and you said you had twenty-four hundred students and you knew that forty-five were in the district, then during the year, that becomes forty-seven, two kids move. I think we have a responsibility to that, right? We should budget in some way for that. But when you have kids come from another town, just because this is a good town to live in, I'm not sure that that should be on the backs of anything except a potential stabilization. That's, that's my argument. of anything, except a potential stabilization count. That's, that's my argument. The next line that you have is FY20, number of students brought back. I wanted to share this with you. So Amy, this goes to a question you ask all the time, like, "What are we doing on track?" So elementary student, wasn't the collaborative, they're back with us, doing great, having a good year, and we're excited about it. And I know exactly what we're talking about here, and I'm excited to say it. We have a secondary student that wasn't private, wanted to come back. Sorry, it just didn't last. Just couldn't, couldn't last. If you flip over, you have a sample of our out-of-district costing of FY21. So PICO is a member collaborative for 180 days, is approximately $2.65 and $23 a day. ESY is extended services, so this is extended, uh, services beyond, that's another $51.91. So the total cost, so that means a longer school year than the 180, choosing another four or five weeks. Um, that's the total cost per student, not including transportation. We can provide that to you as well. A $52,932,40 per student. South Coast Collaborative, we are a non-member district, so we pay three tenants a day. The collaboratives have, what they've done is, if you're a member, you pay less, you also sit at the table, you make votes. Right now, we're actually hiring new executive director. We, uh, we hired, uh, we, we implemented new technology, because the, the kids. I, I have to be careful how I say this, because it, it gets me really riled up, but I took a tour of where we were sending our students five years ago, and I made it my life that the Norton student shouldn't go to where they were going. And it didn't save us money, didn't really cost us money either, but I, I just couldn't believe, we were sending our students, our needy students, to a building that no one in this room would ever want to send their child to. That's how run down the building was. It was an old, the, the falling apart building. Uh, and again, because they were just trying to find the space, and that, the new executive director, when she came in, it became a goal of hers, I was the chair, and it's not to pat me in the back, it's just to tell you that these kids deserve our best. And we're paying $52,000, so we better make sure they're getting our best, uh, you know. Uh, and then the LEAK school, so this is an example of a private school, uh, $103,216 days. LEAK private schools are usually longer school day than, uh, than any. Anchor Academy, JRI is 198 days, $55,590, or $60,000 will be extended. Um, we're really, um, we're really working hard to bring down the cost, but it's not easy. It's just not easy. Um, we got a private school tuition increase last year, that was $26,000 for one year increase. So I went to the State House, and I spoke against it. We're able to go in front of the State House, because it's voted on by a DESI group and all that. And I spoke against it, because I said, "My, my student is not going to see the benefit of the addition that you're putting onto your building. They don't need any of this stuff that's going to go in there, so why should I be paying for it?" Didn't matter, but at least we spoke our piece. Um, so this is a constant for us, as you know. Um, and then the tuition proposal, collaborative, private schools, mass schools, out-of-state schools, and the total 3.7 million. We are including that our circuit breaker will be at 65%, and that we will be placing $900,000 of that, roughly, Matt will have an exact number for us at the budget process into this, um, so that you can see how we use our circuit breaker to the best of our ability.
What's a circuit breaker?
So circuit breaker, great question. Circuit breaker is, you take, you take a student's tuition for an out-of-district, and we owe the first, now it's $45,000 for this coming year. The first $45,000 of that $60,000 belongs to us. The remaining $50,000, we're going to get somewhere between 15 and 75% back. So it means a little bit, when you have these $200,000, because the first 45 is ours, now you've got $155,000, of which you might get 75% of it back. And it's paid out in the following year, so that's where you see the benefit. The only time we really ever see a benefit is a few years ago, we actually had the perfect scenario, where we literally had like four students going out, and we were able to put that, those funds into our budget, and we were able to, if you remember, I had a flat increase in special education tuition. I don't know if some of you remember that. It was a 0% increase in, in special ed tuition, because we absorbed almost $300,000 of circuit breaker money that we didn't have to put into that. Was it a good decision? At the time, it was a good decision, because politically, we were trying to just establish that we were using the money for the right reasons, which was to offset the special education budget. So for any, so here's the negative. For every student that we have in district, it's the same scenario, but now it's harder to get any money back, right? Because if it's $45,000, and if the teacher costs me $60,000, and I got two kids in there, I'm not getting any money back. I'm not going to see circuit breaker. So damned if you do and damned if you don't? Yes.
I know, I don't remember if it was last budget cycle, or somewhere in between, we talked about the potential of circuit breakers on the transportation piece, because I know that's also a big line item.
Right.
So have we heard more about that?
We have not. Uh, what we, what Matt and I are hearing from his association and my association, is that when the House passed, uh, when the House put forth their, uh, when the government put forth his budget, which hasn't been approved yet, it does not include the original 25% for circuit breaker transportation reimbursement, which over four years is supposed to be 100%. 25, 50, 75, and 100. I don't think we'll ever see 100. But boy, oh, boy, it would be nice to get 50 or 75% of that. For us, for us, we're talking three to four, maybe $500,000. That's a deal breaker for us, because if you can offset that circuit breaker in transportation, that opens up a certain percentage of that money to be just part of our budget, uh, which, it's a huge deal for communities like us. So according to those that know better than I do, that's part of the deal, to quiet down the 183 of us that are ticked off about only getting $30 per student. I want to see it before I stop chirping, because I just chirp it. I'm telling everybody this isn't fair, it's not equitable. We're creating 183 districts that eventually are, all have to have overrides, are all going to have significant budget cuts long-term. Last page, a second. So that was the goal for tonight. It was to provide, provide, educate. Please email myself or Matt, as you know, it's public record, but if you email me directly for more information, if there's a line you want, we're going to put, um, we'd like to meet, we would like to meet one more time with the subcommittee, to go over transportation, and then to go over, um, some of our budget needs for next year. So then when you hear us on the 16th, you're actually hearing some of it for the second time. You might be able to talk more about it, criticize it more, ask for more information, whatever the, whatever combination you want. I don't think we've set another date, so we can sit here tonight, since it's all of us, and take a look at our calendars. It probably has to be not next week, but the week after, only because I know that we have teaching negotiations, we have a school committee meeting, uh, next week, and I think you guys are on on Monday nights, next week.
I thought Bill...
There was a list of five suggested dates.
Right.
That we can pick from. Paul seems to be scrambling for that right now.
Paul is so organized. Uh, the 10th and the 12th of March?
See if I can find the 12th of March for me.
Um, maybe it was the 10th or the 12th. They, I think Bill wanted us to weigh in which dates worked. I remember commenting that all the time.
I, I would prefer the 12th, but I can do the 10th.
Good. What day of the week is the 12th?
The 12th is Thursday, that's correct.
It's supposed to be Thursday. There could be a select floor meeting that night, isn't there? No, there won't be. It'll be, are you sure? Because it's 12. But then they have another one next Thursday.
So the 12th is good?
Sure.
Um, if this is only going to be the group, we can do it in my office, if you want to get cozier. Uh, it's up to you guys. Bathrooms are right there, water's right there. All we can do it here. It's up to you.
I'm just checking the town calendar for March.
Oh, this is close to my house. I love my powers.
Yeah, I don't mind it here. It's night, it's roomy, and maybe more people want to show up after they see the beautiful tape of the first one.
We're talking about the 12th?
Yes.
There's nothing on the town calendar, so there's no official meeting.
Yeah, so I can, I usually just email Bill and say, "Bill, we've agreed on the 7th." And again, more members would want to come that day.
12th, okay.
And we'll, we'll...
No.
12th.
Next Wednesday.
So the 12th is good?
Yes.
12th is good. So you'll, uh...
I'll take care of communication.
Yeah.
I'll do that tomorrow. And, um, we'll be back here for, so by then, our line item budget from the school committee will be done. We'll be able to spend a little bit more time giving you information. Um, we want to talk about, revolving is always interesting, because we don't have revolving set for next year. We can bring you up to date on this year's revolving accounts, this year's grants, so you can see how much money. One of the things I really want to get into is how much of our, one of our grants is actually paid for personnel. One of our IDEA, specialized grant, is paid for a significant number of our paraprofessionals. So that's money not paid by the local budget.
Do you have a, speaking of that, do you have a number that says, "This is how much we got in grants last year that helped us with our budget"?
Yeah, we can give you a holdup. Yeah, we can pull that.
That'd be a good number to like, throw out at the committee, saying, you know, "By the way, how much money we got ourselves."
Yep.
Because you did it yourself.
Yep.
That could go away at some point, right? If you don't get the grant.
Well, IDEA and Title I have been very consistent. They've been coming down 5%, 10%, then the next year, they're flat, then the next year, they're up 5%. And it's, so what we budget for is, we always budget a 10% loss, because I don't know. None of those budgets have passed well into, after our budgets are done.
We don't know typically until July.
Right.
The actual numbers are.
July's an early, usually.
That's a, that's a very early estimate.
Yeah. We found out in September before that we weren't getting overdue. And Title I is, is kind of funky right now. Um, we're waiting to see what that comes out, and I think we're going to be okay, but there's potential we're going to lose $100,000 there.
Which is basically 50%.
Yeah, it's a good chunk there.
The problem that we have is, um, when you look at the dynamics of the grants, again, without, without politics of what, what we believe in and all that, the administration, the last three years going on for, has come in with significant recommendations of cuts to Title I and IDEA. Both the House, under the Republican leadership, and now under Democratic leadership, and the Senate have said, "We just can't do that. That is, that's not going to work, that's not going to play well at home." So what they've done is they've at least leveled serviced it, or leveled funded, excuse me, or put actually a couple more dollars to it. The problem with the more dollars is that they've been very much earmarked around poverty. You know, so some of the, some of the communities, so Massachusetts gets one of the smallest chunks of the entire 50 states, just because of the dynamics of who we are.
And they also use a different formula than we use for free and reduced lunch, so across the district, we have almost 20% of our students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. They use a very different formula, and it's kind of hard to explain and wrap your head around, but basically, we have just above 5% of our students that qualify at that level of poverty. It's 100% poverty. So it's basically a family of four, bringing in about $23,000 a year.
And this year...
There are a few families...
And this year, and Matt can tell you this, because he does the numbers, this year, we had 30 families, roughing it, give or take two or three, that we start the school year by, by showing them as free and reduced lunch, because, from the prior year, because it takes the entire month from September into early October to get that free and reduced lunch paperwork done. We had families off by $12, and no longer are free and reduced lunch. $12 a month. Family of three, $12 a month. I'm sorry, I can't give you free and reduced lunch.
Certainly can't afford lunch with $12. Outside school lunch for a week.
So...
Hold on, Ken.
It's, and again, we're lucky as a community, we're not a community that has a lot of that, but those hardships are happening. And they're happening in some situations where people become unemployed, uh, or people are underemployed, you know, which is, you know, one of the biggest forces of economics is unemployment. You know, you're, you're collecting a check, but your background and experience should be at a whole different charge than the one that you have, but this is how you make, this is how you get insurance. Um, so...
Do we have that scenario? So I know you were saying $10 a month short, but if kids don't have money, they go up and go get lunch. And I guess they, the goal is they'll reimburse at some point later on.
Yeah, we...
If that continues and continues, they don't reimburse, I'll call it a bad debt write-off.
Right.
Does that happen, and where does that happen, or where do you see that number in the...
We see it, we keep an eye on it pretty regularly, because we never want the number to be something significant. So what we do is, we use our third-party private partners to cut us a check, to offset that number.
Donation, okay.
So last year, I had a person come to me, took $5,500, right on, right just said, "I want those gone. Take the first $5,500 off." We had almost $10,000 worth of. So this year, we implemented more of a, like, Matt keeps like a, like a month-to-month, "Where are we with these? Why?" Do we have a story? Does the guy, does counselor know something that we don't know? So we also don't want to send them nasty letters that says, you know, so...
And we also have a policy with our food service program that they are not to talk to students about lunch. Like, if a student come up and grab a meal.
That we feed kids. Here. Kid comes in, they're hungry, they get a meal.
Or absolutely, they should.
No questions asked.
There's no question about that.
And it's not the students' fault, we think, how many other lunch companies.
Absolutely.
But so, you referenced the $5,500 you're reimbursing, just for my simple, what's that expense on the books for that $4,500, if you want?
So, um, at the end of the year, we're allowed to, we, we have, Uptown will have, like, a, just for a second, numbers, say it's $15,000 of bad, of debt at the end of the year. It's not all bad. So some of it is, you know, you have 2,500 students, you know, if they're all over by $5, that adds up to a considerable number. Um, so I've been in arguments with the state, and I'm winning. We're allowed to carry, I don't get a lot of wins, but this one I do get. So we're allowed to carry over that debt that is not bad debt. We know that mom, you know, the next year, mom and dad are going to put $60, $60 on the kid's account for September 1st. It's going to clear up that $5, $10 negative balance. Um, we have, I, we have a number of people who it's a larger debt.
Yep.
So we'll try and get that cleared through the donations and everything, but if we get to a point where we look and we say, "This is bad debt," we're going to have to finance that with our budget, um, or with school choice funds, anything except for the money collected for food services. You cannot use that, you can't use grants to pay off the bad debt.
Yeah.
It can't be any federal funds that are directly provided to you. So you have to, it has to come from, and generally, we take it from the budget, we find.
Okay.
And we'll write a check to food service to pay off.
And the only time that we can, the only time that we can say to somebody, "I'm sorry, well, there's nothing else going to happen, except your son can't graduate until you pay that bill."
Yeah.
So when a student moves from eighth grade to ninth grade, you can't stop them. The only time that you have under legal norm is any fees for lost books, uniforms, food services, whatever. That's the only time you can collect. And I've, I've seen some big checks.
Okay. So at some point, potentially, when we say within the budget, there's an expense item, or...
Right.
Fees used from some other source.
Yeah. We've, we've been really lucky, because what Matt did that was different from the past, is he just basically made an argument of, "I know I'm getting that money. It's just not going to be here until after July 1st. It's not going to be here until September."
Right.
And because, why? Because they normally pay, and the kid's still enrolled, and they're still here. If a student leaves, one of the things I instituted is, then we don't release the paperwork to where that student is going, until that bill is paid.
Okay. And does that similar thing happen with busing?
Yes.
They, they don't pay the fee, and then...
Uh, nobody owes us money for buses.
Yeah, that's, we put a stop to that.
We, we, yeah, we, we, that was a...
But 100% payment.
We slammed that door down.
So you'll remember, two years ago, right, two years ago, I think, um, there was a big discussion, Ross's School Committee, about that. We had a, a large number of people who just simply weren't paying. They were just getting on the bus and saying, "Too bad I'm not paying."
Yeah.
So we went through a process, said, "Okay, the process is going to be, you have to have your, your pass ahead of time. If you don't have it..." Jen's laughing right now, but...
I'm just laughing because Matt jinxed out people from one of those topics.
I don't remember, I don't remember what the, what the, what initially was, I think we said 30 days.
I think we said we would bring them to school, but the parent had to come up.
Right, they come up. We would, yeah, bring them home, and then eventually, we would stop picking them up.
It's great. It, it's an awful situation, because it's time to really think about free transportation for everybody, but where do you get another $350,000? Because that's what you need. But you, you've got one way in, you've got basically one way in and one way out of this town. You're going to have to do something at some point. I don't know how it's going to happen.
I have a question for you, and for my fellow finance committee members. Would you guys be interested in seeing, as you mentioned, you know, we've got $350,000, and you know, uh, we need that to provide free transportation and solve this problem. Uh, and where's it going to come from? But your overall budget is 30?
$29,957,64.
This year.
30 million. Well, you have a $30 million budget. What do you mean, where is $350,000 going to come from? You have $30 million, and you're allowed to move it around however you want to move it around. So, right? Now, I say that...
Can you define that?
I'm taking, Aaron's neck is turning red. This is very out of his, like, norm.
Now, I say that, um, because I think it would be helpful for, for us to see a breakdown of where all the money goes. And, and I think it's a pretty simple thing to look at. And I don't know if anyone else from the finance committee would be interested in seeing it, but if you think of your household expenses, as you have your income or your budget, and then your mortgage costs this much, your electricity costs this much, and then, and then here's where it all goes, and you realize, "Oh, wow. You know, we, we thought we had a good budget, uh, but this is why we can't afford to go on vacation, kids. This is where all the money goes." I'd be interested to see that.
So we've been supplying, we've been supplying a year-to-date financial report to the school committee on a monthly basis. We, we didn't hit last month, because the, the meeting was too close to schedule. But right after we present that to the, to the school committee, we send it to the FIDCOM. So you guys should be getting a copy of it. So you guys should be getting a copy of that now.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's really what that is.
All the information is out there.
So the budgets there gives us, it gives you the full expenditure to date on, on a line-by-line basis, as well as any encumbrances we have open. So you can kind of see on there where, you know.
I think, I think what he's, more talking about is.
I think I'm assessing is a simpler view of it.
Yeah, simpler view of it. I was about to say, I think, I think we're looking at, how much are we paying for teachers, custodians, parent professionals, administrators? How much are we paying for transportation to the schools? How much are we paying for just those chunks? Because if you took the chunks.
How does it all add up to thirty million dollars and we can't afford?
Can I suggest going the other way on this, actually, rather than making it simplistic? Because the problem with a simplistic budget is when I, when I say, yeah, hey, you know, we spent fourteen million on teachers and we spent this on this, this, you say, oh, well, just take fifty from here, fifty from there, fifty from there, you got three-fifty. It's not that easy. So I would actually suggest going the other way and giving them a full one-year detailed budget that gives a breakdown of every line. That way you can see what it's all going to, because in the end, and I know you're saying it facetiously because I know you too well, but.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's basically impossible.
It was facetious.
Yeah. Yeah. For the two of you watching, but, but it's, it's basically impossible to find three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand free dollars. It just doesn't exist. And I know there are people, and there are people in this town who, who are not saying it facetiously, who really think, why can't you? And I know that that's your, your exact point.
Yeah, I didn't come up with those.
There's so many.
It's tricky, right, Dinesh? Because I just looked, because on this Monday night's meeting, and I heard a rumor that there's a budget shortfall, so I was doing some digging into the year-end, like, we get the monthly budget variance reports from James every month. So I pulled up last June's year-end variance report and the previous June's year-end variance report to kind of take a look, like, who's got extra cash at year-end? And I think in twenty nineteen, you guys turned back like four-hundred-something thousand dollars, and I'd be willing to bet that a big chunk of that was circuit breaker money and another chunk of that was Medicaid money. And so you can't count on that, and you don't get it during your operating cycle. So that's money you're giving back, but you don't actually have.
A hundred percent of, a hundred percent of Medicaid money is both back with free cash.
So, great, it's four hundred grand, but it's four hundred grand you can't use until, like, two budget years later, because by the time the free cash gets certified, we've already passed the budget cycle for the coming year.
And by the way, that's already been incorporated into that, whatever that year's budget is.
Right.
So it's, it's not that simple.
There's a local.
No, but when people just look at the numbers, because that's the public record, it looks like you're coming to town meeting begging for more money in the fall, and then you hand back four hundred grand every summer, which is not the reality of the situation, but on paper, that's what it looks like.
But Dinesh, back to your point, if you were to provide me a detailed list, a detailed breakdown of.
You can do that. See, that's a difficult phrase to do.
No, but if you were to provide me a detailed breakdown of, you know, each individual teacher salary, for example, I could just as easily look at that long list of teachers and go, well, you can easily, you know, can you lop a couple out of there? The same way I could on, the same way I could.
Sure, Eric, you can teach chemistry next week.
Right, but the same way I could on, on a, on a more standing-back general view of it, right?
Yep, we, we, and, and the thing is, here's the thing, right? It's like, yeah, theoretically, we always can. The one place we can't is really the, the spend. The spend is, generally speaking, is mandated in its entirety. So, yeah, we can. We can always, you know, we can always lop off a teacher here or there, whatever, but then now that does increase our class sizes. If it's a math teacher, you know, now who's gonna teach that math class? You know, it's, it's not, it's not as simple as that, and our, our classrooms are already at the point where I call them, some of them at least, to the point where they're not overcrowded, but they're, they're bumping up against what I think we'd be comfortable with in numbers. So, and, and three-fifty, you know, we go back and look at the salaries here, it's not one or two teachers, it's not, nobody's making.
Five.
Yeah, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It's, it's gonna be a substantial amount of people.
It's a little hard to.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to find, you know? And it's, and again, despite what some people in the town think, we're not overstaffed. We don't have gold chalkboards. It's, we're, our money is accounted for. And, and I say this, I've said this for years to people, if, if someone thinks they can find money in our budget, I welcome, I'm, I'm all for it. You know, we've had multiple, multiple members in the town who, for lack of a better term, I'm called anti-schools, and they're always complaining about what we're doing with our money. I say it every single one of them, come on, man, these guys, do four math, we can, we'll give you a full detailed budget, line-by-line budget. If you can find me money, thank you, because we need it desperately, you know? And, and I know the town does too. This is not, it's not a, a schools problem, but it's, there's, there's no hidden money. It's not like there's some money that we're not telling people about, you know, wait, what's this, this blank line right here with eight-hundred thousand in it? That's, that doesn't exist.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how, what a, what a easy way to get that message across is, is, would a, would a simple breakdown of?
Yeah, so I, I think, and this is my own gated opinion at this point, is the people who think that are gonna think that. And, and the reason they don't come in to get the budgets is they don't give a damn what the, what the actual numbers are. They've made their decision, I wanna feel this way, and, and they're gonna have now, they're gonna have confirmation bias. Anything that supports my view, I think is absolutely true. If you show me hard numbers that dispute it, well, that, you must be lying there. There's nothing you can do with that. I mean, it's.
So there's, I think there's a couple of things.
So it's not a work well. I think. Yeah, it really is. You should look at it, you guys should look at it just to see, it's familiar, isn't it?
I, I think there's a couple of things that are, that compound this discussion that are important. Number one is, we have line items that we estimate for every single year. Right? It's like our overtime account. It is what it is. So just this week, last week until this week, we had three maternity leaves. And two of the three started earlier than two days. So I'm paying that teacher, whatever their salary is, and I'm, have a substitute. And in the areas that I talked about earlier, the chemistries and all those areas, if I have any of those, I'm not getting an eighty dollars up. I'm paying somebody two, three hundred dollars to be here. It is what it is, because that's potentially twelve weeks of not educating somebody, unless you find that, that person. So that's, that's a line item. Then you've got out-of-district, special education, transportation. I mean, this year, we had a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in transfers within special education, transportation, because of situations with students on buses being transported with their significant learning disabilities that required us to separate them. Hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. When I found out, it was a bad day in the office, to say the least. So we, we've put in protocols and procedures that those surprises cannot happen. You know, we need reports on a regular basis, we need check-offs, we need approvals. Now, approving it is part of an IEP meeting, and I can't say yes or no to that. That's not my decision. But I sure as heck wanna know if all of a sudden something just went up fifteen thousand dollars to transport a kid, because it's important for our budget process. Because I want to send you guys emails that says, dear FinCom, just want you to know, that line item that we talked about that had ninety thousand is now a seventy thousand negative, because we, you know, and I can't give you specifics of the situation, but I can just give you the information so that you, you have it. So that people don't think we're just moving lines just because we can. It's, it's a, it's a constant moving situation. I mean, I make decisions every single day on, okay, should I take the student health risk survey for students in grade six to twelve? I've got, I got vaping up the Azu with marijuana, along with everybody else in the Commonwealth, by the way, not just the Norton issue. I got social emotional issues, I got teen suicide issues, I gotta find forty-eight hundred dollars within my budget to take a, a risk survey, get parental permission, figure out where are these, what are the kids saying? Right? What are they, what are they really saying as a group of kids? And look at those results and say, well, now we need to do this in order to offset that. That's how we work, situations we can't control. We spent five, six thousand dollars on the anti-vapthing machines for the bathrooms.
They go off all day long?
They go off all day long.
Anti-vapthing?
Yes.
Like a smoke detector?
It's like a smoke detector.
Yeah. They go off fifty-five dings in one hour, on average.
Middle school too, where do you have?
Just at high school, yes.
Joe, also, I wanna think one of the other conversations that keeps coming up is, well, your enrollment keeps going down, but why aren't you cutting staff or cutting teachers? Earlier today, I was in a school start time committee meeting, and I said to them, at one point, I was one of ten second-grade teachers at JCS, ten. There's now five. So there have been staff cuts, and I think people don't see that, because we've been building up some of our special education programs. We've moved people, we've transitioned positions.
Our over-under is.
There are definitely not ten second-grade classrooms.
So, so here's what's happened. Our over-under, not including for next year, seven-year period, uh, ten-year period of general education teachers cuts is twenty-nine. We have twenty-nine less people. But our special ed and support, not including Paris, so this would be unit aid teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, adjustment counselors, psychologists, team chair, special ed teacher, that's up nineteen. So your over-under is only ten. You're down ten. So people are like, oh, you lost seven hundred kids, they're coming down ten. That's why. Because you could take every single one of those twenty-nine general ed teachers, and you could say, on average, they have twenty-four kids, twenty-five kids every day. The numbers add up.
And that, and that ten is a ten retirements.
Right.
Nobody, nobody thinks of that as letting somebody go, well.
This, this year's budget recommendation, this year's budget recommendation has taken retirement positions for full-day kindergarten because we have incredibly high class sizes in kindergarten. We wanna lower them. And we have the movement of elementary-grade teachers to elementary to take care of the bubble. So in other words, we're not hiring new staff in those grades, we're just shifting the personnel, if they're properly licensed, we're shifting the personnel to where they're needed. So you're not gonna see this blow up for me this year that says I'm hiring seventeen new people. That's not in the, in, in the game this year.
Do we have a sense of when the birth rate should stabilize?
Yes. Twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
Do we have a sense of where?
In terms of.
Where, of, of, how, at what number?
I think we're gonna get down to, as a total district, we're gonna be somewhere around twenty-one hundred to, twenty-one hundred to twenty-two hundred.
I hate these projections.
I know, I do too, but.
But that's without.
Without any knowledge.
That's without any of that. That's, I mean, our, our nest debt projections right now are off by a hundred and thirty students. But the third party, all they do is they take the numbers from the state, they ask us to verify the numbers, and then they, they go to town hall and get the numbers, actually, we go to town hall. We fill it all in, we give it to them, and they put it into the computer, and it spits out the projections.
I don't think they even do that.
And honestly, I mean, we have kindergarten registration right now, it's happening through March sixth. I could, like, just throw out a number. There is no rhyme or reason to what number you have coming in from one year to the next. You think you have a thought process, you look at birth rates, you look at some home sales, no idea. We never know what we're gonna get from one year to the next.
Yeah, I get a request for a ten to forty B meeting, and I said, listen, the forty Bs are gonna ask me, where do you want the bus stop? I'm not, I don't work for forty Bs. I work for the town of Norton and the school committee. And the fact is, I don't know where I'm gonna put a bus stop, because I don't know how many kids are gonna go there. I don't know if they're gonna have eight kids there or eight hundred kids there. I don't know. I don't know if they're going to the JCS or the high school.
And those things work if you say, what's the projection for the United States?
Right.
And when you say town of Norton.
Too small sample size.
You just say, I mean, it's, if you look at the, the class, the, the class sizes, the number of kids in each, in each class, it's, you know, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, goes up and down.
Right.
There's, there's no rational piece to it. I mean, it's, kids come in.
JCS.
Forty B housing comes in.
JCS, Hay, and LGN are all between a low of two and a high of twenty-six kids in every classroom. Now, you know what twos are. They're specialized.
Right.
That's where they are. And I'm, I'm to the point right now where I'm, I think I'm gonna take, you know the classroom pictures that the kids take? I think I'm just gonna bring that to town meeting and put it all over the place so that people can actually see that there's kids' pictures. Oh my God, there are twenty-six kids in room three. Can you imagine that? Because I think some people think there's nobody there.
Can you legally do that?
I mean, tomorrow night's meeting.
Most of them signed off on it, so, yeah.
That's tomorrow night's meeting. Take it from the back of the room.
One quick question, just, what would budget the number say for the bus? We're collecting a fee that goes with that, I'll call it a contract or whatever you want to call it.
Right.
Get a million bucks.
Yep.
Is, is the gross expense, that's what we're gonna pay the transportation company. Do we ever see, is our financials booked net, or is it gross and net, the two-hundred thousand or whatever is somewhere else? Do we see a net expense on our books, or do we always see?
So we, we take the, you know, this year was a million, oh-seven-seven-five-hundred was the, the transportation budget. We receive about a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in fees.
Yep.
So it certainly doesn't cover a lot of that. We will, we will spend exactly that one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, and the rest has to be absorbed by budget. So next year, we're not, you know, we're not anticipating a price increase, we will receive one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars again next year, but our, our budget will be up two and a half percent, so that will be absorbed into the budget.
So is it a matter of then, pay the bus company for two slots? One is for town expense, if you will.
Monthly.
The second is from the revolving account, through checks.
Yep.
So you'll never really see, you'll see the one-seventy-five drawdown through a revolving account.
Right.
But you won't see it really go on the books. In, in my world, you're not gonna see.
Right, I, because you look at the budget, and you see, yeah, but, yeah, we spend that down there.
And don't forget that, that doesn't, you got the other, you got the third part that goes in there, that's athletics.
Yep. So we, when you make your estimate, it's at the million seven, the million, whatever it was there.
Yep.
You see the revolving account over here.
Yep.
You know you're gonna use, you have the million seven, which is really the gross number.
Yep.
You know the overall expense will come to a million-seven plus the one-seventy-five, or it's really a million-seven less the one-seventy-five?
Less the one-seventy-five, so, so it's less the, less the one-seventy-five, so that's what we budget on that line, but also less the approximately ninety thousand dollars that maybe other transportation, uh, athletics, field trips, all that stuff. They, they might get revolving funds as well. So, when you look at the appropriation budget, you're only seeing eight-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand on that, at the, on that line, because we're, we're paying with other revolving funds.
Same thing, same thing with tuition line items for, uh, uh, preschool. You know, if, if, if I have six preschool teachers and they make eighty thousand dollars each, that's four-hundred-and-eighty thousand. And if I'm collecting a hundred-and-fifty thousand, you're only gonna see the three-fifty in the budget. You're gonna see, we're, we're basically telling you it's three-fifty, but we're counting on a hundred-and-fifty in fees to come in.
Right.
If we don't get to one-fifty, then I gotta come back to you guys.
So that's almost, that's almost kind of a reserve, if you will, saying you got a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand reserved.
Not if, no.
That's what I wanna clarify, because I think that's a lot of our policies.
This is part of our budgetary process. We, we don't, we know we are going to spend those receipts that come in. We will spend it on, on the budget, on the, uh, on the expense. And the budget will support the, it'll be one million less the hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
But, the budget will, that was my-
If we were requesting an individual item, we would request the eight-hundred and whatever, twenty-five.
Whatever it is you actually want.
Not the one million. Yeah, because we already are assuming that we're getting-
And you'll see in our budget, it's usually on the last page. It'll say grants, offsets, it'll say revolving, transportation offset, athletics, that, that's, that's offsetting. So, when we give you the operating budget, it's what's in the actual operating, and then the revolving's here, and that's what gives you the total pool. Because a lot of people, you're correct, Steve, what people think is, they're, they're, they got a kitty for one-seventy-five in transportation.
Right.
And the fact is, no. What we're saying is, let's, let's say tomorrow, nobody was paying for school.
Right.
Nobody was paying the transportation bill, or whatever that bill was. Then, I have to either take it out of the budget and figure it out, or I have to go back to FinCom and request a, a reserve transfer.
Yep.
Those are my two options.
So how do we paint that? How do we paint that picture so people will understand that's what's happening?
It's a great idea, you know what?
I think-
I, I think, I think one of the things to do, and I'm glad you brought this up, is when we do our budget presentation, we put it out there, is to simply say, "Transportation total is this. Fees are this. Line item six-six-four-six-five-three has this." Just, just put it out there.
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful to let people see what portion of the budget you guys are paying out of revolving, grants, other funds that are coming in, even the piece of buses that are being paid by athletics and clubs and all that, um, field trips, whatever, and see like, okay, these are the dollars that are coming from grants. These are the dollar, and in these categories, these are the dollars that are coming from, you know, fees paid by families, whether it's for athletics, busing, what have you. These are the funds that are coming in through other revolving areas. And then, this is our total budget, and the net between those is what we're asking for the town to fund.
Divide and we can do that.
I'm, I'm not exaggerating, I tell you, if all those funds and school choice disappeared tomorrow, it would absolutely devastate this town.
Oh, without a doubt.
I mean, completely devastate the town. We would have to shut down multiple markets.
Yes.
For a couple of years.
Yeah.
You'd definitely be preaching that, it's just how you get that.
Right. But the, the problem is, again, people don't wanna believe it.